I'm very unfortunate because I go to the library. This way, this way. Because he's standing right in the middle of the intersection.
Oh, close, I know I said it.
I don't want to be the guy that proposes.
What's that last?
That's how fast that yours going.
It's a case of. This isn't the right Daniel for it. Brian's in the bad spot.
I get it.
I guess I don't understand the question.
Don't we usually have those type of hearing? Ordinance doesn't meet. It needs to.
See if you're ready, autonomy, you're ready. Right. We'll call me to order with roll call.
Brian?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Argon?
Here.
Katie?
Here.
France?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Knutson?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council, let that bring us down. The council will receive information on agenda topics brought before the council by members of the public. The council will not discuss these topics and will not take action on any of them at this meeting. Is there anyone who's in the audience which we heard this evening? We will move to consent agenda. One motion approves all consent items. Item one is improvements for the meeting held on August 22nd, 2022. Number two, approve deny August 2022 paid bills. Number three, receive August 2022 monthly building permit required. And number four is approve deny election workers, Jody Simon, Lindy, Linda Biskowski, and John Ross. Any questions on the consent agenda? I'll take a motion.
We'll approve.
Motion by Argonos, seconded by Katie. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. General business, we have two items. Number one is approve deny public hearing regarding violations of city code 452-15 and 16 at 541 South Park Street. Staff has requested limitations to business-related equipment and hours of use at the property located at 541 South Park Street. Brian, how you doing today?
Good, thank you, Mayor. So a little background here, back in 2014, we had a similar, we had a property near a hospital. Generate a lot of number complaints. There's nothing really the city could do because the vehicles were licensed or road-ready, the stuff that was the. Look, there were, you know, there's complaints about junk, but it wasn't junk, it was just cluttered, so. This, the neighbors requested counsel under this section to address it, which the council did at that time, those of you who are there at the council at that time. So it's kind of a similar situation. We have this property now with Mr. Sonnenberg's property. He said his landscaping business there for 90s. About 2016, I started receiving complaints that the business had, was growing, the scope of the business was getting bigger. Vehicles, trailers, and the effects I go with that, where the engines idling, the backup beeping, the headlights in the window, possible quote-unquote employees coming to the site. So eventually went to the plant commission, and after a couple meetings, the plant commission denied the request. However, that did not stop complaints to the business, right, so you continue to use the business as landscaping business on the property there. Many discussions, going back and forth. Went into municipal court, and that municipal court, the judge ruled in Mr. Sonnenberg's favor, said that basically that deal was a problem, but the home business, he was running there, a landscaping business was not covered under the home business section of our ordinance, which we've since amended, but of course, we don't, we can't retroactively, it's only once you change, what was there beforehand is not grandfathered. So that's why we're here today. Business still running, it's still a contractor business, he's got a couple of trucks, trailers, landscaping equipment. He's looking at the ordinance. The only type, the only place you can have a contractor's yard is in the B2 business zone and the I1 light industrial zone, and those are both commercial, conditional uses. So if you had a new one to come in, into town, or someone to start up a new contractor's yard, you have to go to those two zones, and you have to be a conditional use, conditional use before the plant commission. We do have. Do you want to use that video? I do have a video from the neighbor, if you'd like to view it. Jake, can we get a photo, please? I was lost in the photos and. Does he like the loading operation in the morning? So I guess in conclusion, I know we've talked about the plant commission to pass, both contractors, you know, there are other contractors on top of building contractors, local contractors and so on. They have, you know, work vehicle, they bring home maybe a trailer. That would be my request. Just limit, I can understand, you know, he can run his business from there, just like any other contractor, but it shouldn't be, it's still, property should still remain conforming with residential area, so. That would be my request. Any questions?
Questions for Brian?
Just to clarify, Brian, that video was at 8:00 AM?
Correct.
Any other questions for Brian? Go ahead, Phil.
So Brian, you're recommending that the council would decide that storage of his equipment could no longer be there except for a work vehicle, or maybe a work vehicle and a trailer?
Correct.
And he doesn't fall under the, the new ordinance? Because he was grandfathered in?
Correct.
Has the amount of equipment and material increased over the last couple of years?
Yes.
And we have the ability to just determine what is a tolerable amount of equipment to have?
Ordnance ordinance, now that we can use the past, you can determine when, if something doesn't conform with that residential area, yes.
Alright, thanks.
How was this different from when he was grandfathered in to?
He's allowed to have, because that was the ruling by the municipal court judge, was that the landscaping business and what he was doing there with his equipment as a quote-unquote employee was, didn't fall under the standards of home business. Therefore, we couldn't enforce the home business standards on this property. But this is more general, you're saying does this property, USBU, is conform with the surrounding area, residential area? Doesn't get specific, rest specific as, you know, the home business.
What's preventing Mr. Sonnenberg from claiming a affirmative defense? Meaning that this has already been adjudicated? Because as part of the evidence in the 690 case, the CUP, noise, vibration, the like was included as part of the evidence, and it was already adjudicated that he was found not guilty and case dismissed. How is this not a case of double jeopardy?
Because that, that focused on the business itself, the use of the property, for the use of the property as a landscaping business. So I'm not saying he can't run his landscape business from his property. But what I'm saying is it can't be a free-for-all, we have unlimited vehicles, and this is actually limited to how many vehicles you have, how many trucks you can have. Like I said, there's only two zones that allow a contractor's yard. They're both conditional uses, and their zones are much more not as restricted as a residential zone. So the judge said, yes, you can run your business from, it doesn't fall, you can run, his landscaping business doesn't fall under the home business ordinance. So within where, where you draw the line then? As far as anyone, well, I'm, well, I guess we've amended ordinance now. But where do you draw the line? You know, it was, the judge didn't rule that while there's trucks, and there's vehicles, and there's trucks, and there's noise, but it's not bad enough. Therefore, it's okay, it was, you get the specific use. Not listening to the ordinance for home businesses.
Under 690, though, home occupation shall not create traffic, visible displays, vibration, heat, noise, odors, dust, glare, or similar nuisances not normally found in the surrounding area. That's what you're saying? Is that this is, because it's a residential neighborhood, it's, even though those properties, they are but light industrial property?
Good, you're right, but they are but light industrial, but they're not light industrial.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, those properties are but light industrial. But, but properties are but are light industrial, not, this listens residential.
Any other questions for Brian, Phil?
And the, and the one picture you have, Brian, is that material being stored there, or is that part of a like it looks like, is it a pile of black dirt, or should I ask Rod?
My guess is, maybe I can speak to that, but I'm guessing it's for the land, floodplain drain he was doing back to his yard.
Oh, so I have, that's, I guess the key point was, was that for this property, or is that for material to use off on a different project?
Okay, probably my problem.
Oh, so that's, that, that's not going to be a permanent pile?
Right now, we're not sure.
We've got other issues to raise in the council that have not been spoken to yet, that we will get to when, when we have our chance to testify and discuss them.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian, I'll take public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this matter? How you doing tonight?
I'm doing alright, better than I was last week, but I apologize for the mask, I had COVID last, just last week.
Sorry to hear that.
Still recovering a little bit, fever's gone, according to CDC, I'm good as long as I'm wearing this thing.
Could you just say, hey, and I don't, somebody might know who you are, but could you just say your name and know where you are?
Yep, yep, so my name's Andrew Adams, I'm an attorney, I represent Mr. Sonnenberg, I'm with Weston Dunn LLC. A few objections just to start with, we objected the notice here. This, these ordinance sections are some, they're related to nuisance, they're related to what's the exact wording here? Fire, health hazard, and aesthetic offense. They're not related to limitations on business-related equipment or hours of use. This notice does not work for this hearing. Additionally, my client did not receive any sort of mail notice, as is generally given for nuisance hearing. Additionally, he got this notice four days ago. And further objection is made to the conflict that my client has with attorney, it's not attorney Horkin, but his firm, I believe that's represented by you, Mr. Brockman, is that right?
Yes, but in this matter, the city is represented by attorney Rebecca Bria.
Okay.
So I'm not involved in this matter.
Just wanted to clarify, thank you. So that initial objection to the notice, I did draft a letter, sent to the common council, I mean, it was like right before coming here, like I said, I've been out with COVID and would have liked to address this sooner, but there it is. Additionally, the last objection related to this notice is that this ordinance section is serves almost the same function as 402-3, or chapter 402 generally. And yet, it seems to circumvent the procedural protections that Mr. Sonnenberg would otherwise have, including notice. And so we objected to this hearing continuing any further.
Should we, we have our own attorney, should we?
Yeah, I think we can note the objection when.
Yeah. I think if you want to note the objection, if someone wants to make a motion, that's fine, otherwise we continue.
Okay.
The objection is noted? Unless someone wants to make a motion? Objection is noted?
So we object to this hearing, object to the grounds, object to the also the characterization of the municipal court ruling, it's, it's the court ruled that Mr. Sonnenberg was not doing anything wrong here, there is a reason that that citation was dismissed. This ruling again here on limitations to business-related equipment and hours of use is what that citation, what those hearings were about, if the city wanted to bring those claims with those citations, the city should have done that, if the city wanted to appeal that, that ruling, they could have appealed it to the circuit court, they did not. If the city wanted to bring these ordinances under some other heading, in that case, the city could have done that as well, the city did not, these issues are waived. Furthermore, the characterization of my client's activities by Mr. Duvall, my client disagrees with, he does not have commercial deliveries to his property, the dirt that's in his front yard right now is a product of him performing landscape on his own property, landscaping on his own property. It's not going off-site to be used for his business. The and moving equipment around at 8:00 AM, I don't know what Reesburg's noise ordinance is, but I would hope that you'd be able to do some work in the city by 8:00 AM. And so with those objections stated, I will see before this time.
Sir, would you say your name again, please?
Andrew Adams.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard on this matter? Okay. This is kind of uncharted territory for me, so should we, any discussion at council, what do you guys think?
Your honor, I'll be very frank, I don't like it. I think it's a bastardization of our ordinances. It's a backdoor attempt. What's next? Are we going to go after 402 if this fails? Mr. Sonnenberg, in my mind, has an affirmative defense. The evidence was presented in a, in a competent jurisdiction, our own court, where these matters were addressed by the city. And if they weren't, they should have been. There's a few legal terms, and I don't know that I even want to. Yeah, I will. It's called restitutiona. It bars claims that have either been litigated or could have been litigated from being litigated again. Protection under the Fifth Amendment. This is a case of a couple of neighbors can't get along. They've used the system, they, I used it to the point that we're sitting here having a quasi-jury determine limitations on, or making limitations that we couldn't get through court. I don't want to appear as if I'm taking anyone's side here because that's not the case, it's the case of what we're doing, I think, is morally wrong. We lost. We changed the ordinance, we learned from that loss, and we changed it. To bastardize, to bastardize 522 or 402 nuisance would be capricious and arbitrary. We'd be, we'd be applying it to one and not all. This council has heard me on my soapbox before talk about chapter 690, that's where the CUPs come from. Where we at the plant commission have to sit and determine case by case. If we set a precedence where we manipulate an ordinance that is intended for something else, for the terms of one one condition, one property, we're putting ourselves, we're creating another precedence that I don't believe as a member of the plant commission that we could, we could continue to abide with. It puts us in a position, Brian's in a position, he's in a no-win position, he's got people complaining to him, what's he supposed to do? The only resolution that I see left is that the individual that has such a complaint, move. We lost. I was very likely would have made the motion to dismiss this, but I think that I wanted to go on the record and say this, I this is dangerous. It looks retaliatory. And I don't want to be a part of it.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions, I don't know if I can ask Brian again, while they're sat down, but I'm just curious, is this an issue with first of all, noise violation, 8:00 AM, I assume that's not too early, because my neighbor mows his lawn at 7:00 AM every week. That's early for me, but I assume there's no issue with the noise violation at 8:00 AM?
It's not, it's not the noise itself, it's, again, this is, you know, you need to request a grass once a week.
Right.
I probably, because everyone's got lawns, has grass, this is specific to running a business.
Yeah, no, these are, these are just general questions from my mind.
And with this, that question.
And you said there's been an influx in equipment since the court hearing? You would say?
Well, not since the court here, but since over time, like, I mean, like you said, he's been there, you know, 18, 19, 20 years or was between, you know, the past six year, five, six years, from when it started then to about five, six years ago, when, when.
Okay, but not necessarily since.
Not since, not since like last month or two now.
Yeah.
Mr. Sonnenberg objects to that characterization, his equipment has been at the same level, number of equipment for the past, again, almost 20 years, he has just replaced old stuff with new stuff.
I assume, I assume his photos are from, back in, early, it was 2017, so. You should be able to see that.
Which were considered already considered in court. The problem with some of those pictures is those were already considered as evidence and adjudicated on. And the idea of noise, to address the noise, if I may, we, as I indicated, we live adjacent to light industrial, the backyard is light industrial, riffy transport, trains, cars. And then adjacent to them is the transfer yard for crawl. No, I'm sorry, for row, row, trucking. We hear the foundry, I live a block from there. And we hear the foundry backup beepers in the, in the, in the equipment at the foundry all day and all night. They're a block closer, they hear it, I'm sure, a little better than I do, but if I can hear it a block away, block further away, that's kind of a rich argument.
Anyone else? Questions, concerns?
Mayor?
Yes, good, Brian.
I would say too, though, those are, those are zone light industrial properties.
Can someone refresh my memory, didn't we, like, already have something of this already here at one point? I remember us having this conversation a couple of years ago. What was, what was, can you just refresh my memory what, with that, why we heard this before?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, there was a property up by near a hospital. Had gone for several years, like I said, there was cars, there was a boat.
I thought it was specifically with this business. We not heard about this business before?
Jason, as a result of this case, we have changed the ordinance, and it has come before the council for approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think the case here, the Jessica Lane case, where there were several houses that were well manicured, and then there was the one with, you know, cars, boats, things like those things in the front yard, and I think we use this ordinance based on the aesthetics of that, where that house just didn't fit into that neighborhood. And people came home to their homes and stuff like that, that's what they looked at, was that house, so I think that's what Brian's trying to imply here, is that the house, we get it, the, the business is there, we understand, in that part, we concede that. But it shouldn't look like that, it shouldn't act like that in an area that's, that's wrong with the premises, I think that's, that's the
Anyone else? Phil?
I guess this is a question more for Max. I know this is in an awkward position, you're new here, so.
Sure.
So the points that Dave brought up with this has been determined once in the court, are we going out on a limb if we would side against the business?
Sure, so we don't, I mean, no one's presented that ruling or what, what happened at that court case.
Sure, so we don't, I mean, no one's presented that ruling or what, what happened at that court case. It's my understanding that the court case was not pursuant to this ordinance. It had to do with another ordinance violation. Am I correct with that, Brian?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so, and that was, what was the ordinance that the violation was?
The home business ordinance, the home business section of zoning ordinance.
Okay, and I think there's been some discrepancy in terms of why, why the court ruled that. So it was Brian's position that the court ruled that the property didn't fall under that ordinance, so therefore you couldn't apply the standards in the ordinance because specifically the landscaping business wasn't identified in that ordinance. I believe it's Sodenberg's position that it was actually, the facts were considered in making a ruling that, for example, it wasn't a nuisance. So I think that there's a, there's a distinction there where if the court just found it doesn't apply because of this, because it doesn't fall within the standard, then the court's making a ruling not based on the actual facts of what's out there. So that's the best answer I can give, yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else? Questions, comments?
I think I have a question for Zach as well. Then if the court found in that case, they found Mr. Sonnenberg to be not guilty and the case was dismissed for a final judgment to occasion. It ultimately or effectively made that illegal non-conforming situation. Does he not have continuous privilege once that determination was made?
Again, in terms of specifics, because I don't have the order, I can't give you an exact answer. I, I would say that if they found that it was a illegal conforming use, and then in this instance, the, the city then changed the ordinance, correct? So in terms of whether or not they're conforming under that zoning ordinance, that specific ordinance, I would say yes, they are because it's, it's their grandfathered in, and as of that time, they were in compliance essentially. It's my understanding that, that the city is saying that they violated a different ordinance.
Correct.
And that's, that's the, the distinction.
So can we, as the city, if we fail at this, for instance, we impose limitations, Mr. Sonnenberg again takes us to a juris, court jurisdiction. They find in favor of Mr. Sonnenberg again, what you're saying, the city would then in turn could go back and pursue our desires by using another ordinance, and it wouldn't, and it wouldn't be considered improper?
I, I guess that's a hypothetical I'm not comfortable addressing because I don't know what exactly you're asking for, but in terms of, terms of the ordinance, it's, it's my understanding, this is completely different ordinance, and in terms of what they're trying to enforce is aesthetic of the neighborhood. And I don't believe that that's the standard in the home business ordinance. So I think it's a different standard, what they're addressing.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Yes, Phil.
So this is more of a rhetorical question to all of you and you, mayor. So it seems like what we're trying to do is come to some happy middle ground that I'm not sure there can be. Where it's not gonna return to just a pristine neighborhood with no work equipment. But then Ryan's suggestion of maybe allowing a work truck or a trailer combo or something, I mean, what is the middle ground that, that is acceptable? You know, is that an under burden cost the landscaping business to have to get remote storage, you know, that probably isn't gonna be free. But then it appears to be out of sync with the rest of the neighborhood there, you know, so.
So back in two thousand nineteen, I'm looking at notes here from the minutes or from this letter. When I was on, I was his only board chair, and we came up with, if he had
work vehicle, SUV with trailer, two pieces of excavating equipment.
But that would kind of comply to the ordinance at that time. And I don't know what he's actually got for equipment there, but.
Yes, sir.
So Andrew Adams again, and just to, to address the, the fact that it sounds like you're looking for a compromise. My client in the case and now is willing to sign an agreement with the city limiting in time his use of the property. So he's planning on retiring. He, he has wanted to do so earlier. This has cost him a lot of money, so he had to push it out a little bit, but it's only, we're only talking about a couple of years here. So if the, if the city's willing to work with us on that, I think we could reach an agreement there.
Would that agreement necessarily mean that when he sold the business, that someone wouldn't buy the residence and the business right there, and you no longer be the owner, but the business would still be in place where it is now?
So as, as the court ruled is, as we've said, the business is not there. It's not, that's not the location of the business. He doesn't, he, he stores his equipment there. The business occurs on sites, but to your question, I believe, yes, that is the answer, is, is he wouldn't then just be able to sell it, sell the business and hold it at the same time and somehow have it be able to continue? Yes.
Your honor, may I, may I address Mike? Mike, I, I think I understand what you're trying to do where at the plan commission, we have the sunset where.
Right, I understand that, Dave.
That's what I'm asking. That's what you're trying to achieve.
And I, but I don't know if this was set up with that sunset clause, that's.
No, it was not because there is no CUP. So any new operator would be required to come before the plan commission and apply for a CUP.
Because they won't be.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's just a clarification of that.
Yes, Phil.
So this is probably more to like Brian and you and Tim. Have you guys been in contact with the legal counsel of this person and about an agreement?
I've never met him before in my life.
Okay, I mean, it seems like when Adam was mentioning with the zoning board of, what, two thousand nineteen, you said? That had a middle ground solution, and if they're willing to do something with the city, is that something we should consider?
I mean, that would be, I mean, I don't, I haven't heard any type of compromise that you guys have, at least. I just want you guys to keep in mind, try to empathize with the other neighbors that live around that area, that I know it doesn't seem like two years is that long of a time, but two years can be a really long time if you live there. And or you lived through nineteen years of it.
Tim, I completely understand what you're saying, but you're asking us to put the property privileges of one over the other.
Or the many over the one. So, because there's, there's, I'm just asking to consider it, just to, to consider what these other neighbors are going through, so.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Becker, to directly address that, I do have signed letters from most of his neighbors. The ones we don't have are either the complaining neighbor or people he could not get in touch with at the time saying that his use of his property does not disturb their uses of their property. I can produce those for the, I don't have those in paper with me right now. I could email them. I can produce them over the council's light.
Okay.
Those neighbors do not live across the street from him. They are north, so they don't see everything and hear everything that's going on. So I don't think that they should actually come.
No.
So if, if the, the details that Adam described from two thousand nineteen, if that was implemented, would that be a satisfactory amount of activity and equipment until retirement? I'm not sure who's gonna answer that.
Brian?
Can I make a clarification on this question? Apart with, if you know, with, with Rodney sells a property, then, then that business is done. Use goes with the property, not with the owner, so. We can put conditions on it if you have like a conditional use, we can, you know, we do that. But generally, as long as that business stays there, it can be ten owners, you know, as long as, as long as it continues, they, they don't stop. You know, the next buyer could use it and run his business out there too, his or her business out there too, same deal, as long as, as long as it was, you know, the same, so.
So you're saying the property is what's grandfathered in, not the business?
Use goes with the property, not the owner.
But is there a use, Brian? It's zone residential.
Yeah, I don't know if I follow that.
That, that sounds conflicting to me. I understand what you're saying, but in, I understand.
I'm saying the next buyer could, one is business, and the other is business.
Right, but I think what Dave and I are questioning is, when they have, when they kick back to the client commission for a conditional use permit, it's a different person, different business.
As long as, once it's, once it's grandfathered, then it stays that way until the conditions change, or they stop. They stop for a year, then they go, then that goes away.
So in essence, what you're saying is that the court determined that there is, there is a use there. So even though the city didn't, didn't provide them with a CUP, court in effect did.
By saying, by saying that
What he was.
his use was not covered under the home business, which we've now changed, but as long as that, what, what he's using it on, contractors are, can stay that way, as long, as long as it falls within that parameters or that it doesn't go away for a year or two, it doesn't. I mean, I guess, we're like saying, where you draw line, you know, where, you know, it's. That's the question. But the use itself, I mean, in general, interior use itself as landscape, skate business can stay.
Could that be spelled out in, in agreement? That when the, the retirement from that business is done, it's done?
I see, that'd be a legal question, I guess. I suppose, I suppose it goes to developers agreement of some sort, I suppose, I suppose.
Yeah, I think.
I think I wanna call on Rebecca. She had her hand out.
Well, I just, we're comparing apples and oranges. What happened in court was an entirely different ordinance. Every time you prosecute an ordinance, it must be a crime, but if not, it's civil. There's elements that you have to meet. If you can't meet them, so be it, that case is dismissed. We're not talking about the same ordinance at all. So to say that there's double jeopardy or you're going about things again that are barred somehow, that's not, that's simply not true. And of course, I would have a different take on how that case was than Attorney Adams. He and I have had contact. I will say the bottom line is we've never really come to any resolution in any sort of a timely manner. And so we're still talking about a resolution here today, and I think that's the problem, that it's not. I don't believe it's a, it's any kind of a personality conflict between the two of us because we get along great. I just don't know how quickly this is going to come to a resolution unless the council acts, if it chooses to do so, to be frank. I mean, that's your call. Otherwise, this is gonna continue for a couple of years is what it sounds like, and that's what the sunset date will be possibly. And I think that's what you gotta consider is what, this conversation, I think, has gone on for a couple of years before I was ever involved. I've now been in for probably a year and a half, two years, and we're still having the same discussion. So I was the one that prosecuted if there's questions about that, but I don't think that's relevant to your discussions tonight. That judge doesn't find anything in relation to the CUP, doesn't find what Mr. Sonnenberg did or didn't do was inappropriate. It's merely looking at the ordinance itself and applying the facts to whether or not it fits that ordinance, end of story. It has nothing to do with the ordinance that you're asking to look at tonight and possibly apply. That's all I had to say.
Thank you for that clarification. Phil?
Could you mention who that was?
Boy, could you?
Sorry, I'm Rebecca Richards Graham, the attorney that prosecuted for the city on the initial ordinance.
Sorry, go ahead, Phil.
That's all right.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
Brian, what was, what was your recommendation? What was your recommendation when you were introducing this?
Some other contractors, a vehicle, work vehicle, trailer, equipment on the trailer.
And that would be onsite parking or street parking or either? And Adam, what was your historical stuff from two thousand nineteen?
I just scrolled off, sorry. So I guess I reread this after we were talking about it, right? So I already just, it says, Rodney has likely, like I advised, a work vehicle, SUV with trailer and two pieces of excavating equipment. I presume, so I mean, Brian, the equipment was part of an onsite floodplain grading project. Therefore, as long as he keeps it to that amount, he is conforming to the zoning ordinance. Now, re, bringing this first time, I kinda took it as a work vehicle, trailer and two pieces of excavating equipment conforming, but now that I reread it, I'm not sure that he meant that those two pieces of equipment were there for the grading and then once they were removed, that it would conform. It's page twelve of the, the text that he sent out.
For a discussion, questions?
So if something happens, I guess going back to Dave's point, if something happens here and then this ends up back in the middle of court, would we be back, or potentially be back in this place, if the court rules in his favor again?
I believe it's going from here to circuit court.
Was that Rebecca?
I, I believe it would proceed from here to circuit court.
Okay.
Now going back to the municipal court on this.
Because we are a quasi jury.
Okay, no, but, so what happened with the home business one and went to court?
That's different. That was a citation that was issued, so citations are heard. Your citations are heard.
So this is gonna, this is gonna end here with whatever.
This would be a legal, this would be a legal action against the city then, and this would proceed to circuit court. I am happy to continue to try to work with Attorney Adams if you wanna table it for a week or two or whatever your next, you know, meeting is, and I can try to work out details if you give me, if you want me to do that. I suspect this will just continue indefinitely, meaning that if he doesn't like the answer, then he will litigate it, and if we don't like the answer, we will litigate. So I mean, there is certainly reason to try to seek an agreement, and I'm happy to talk to him about that and bring back what, if we're able to come up with something that seems even semi reasonable, bring it back to the council for approval. That may be the middle ground, I think, that's being suggested.
I, here's my personal thoughts, and I'm waiting in the wings to say it, and after hearing Rebecca say that, all parties involved have been here tonight. They've heard what the council had to say. We've heard what everybody else had to say. I think, and knowing that Ronnie's a great person, Julie's a great person, I think we should do just that. I think everybody needs to come together and hash it out and figure it out, come to an agreement, and see us in a couple of weeks when we got going on. If they be hashed out, then the jury will come back here even. I just think it's been too long. It just needs to be put to bed. Bring some peace back to the neighborhood. That's my personal feelings. What's everyone else think?
Do you need that in a motion?
If that's what you're looking for.
I don't think either gonna get done in two weeks, so don't do it two weeks.
Even if you figure them off.
Yeah, like the twenty fourth of October, if you table it till the twenty fourth of October, I think that should be enough time.
I think so.
Okay.
At least, at least get something substantive so that we know Rebecca, that we're moving forward, you know. I would not be opposed to extending that if progress is. I would not be opposed to extending that if progress is being made, but, you know, like you said, you know, I don't wanna see just spinning your wheels for another, another month and not having anything to show for it, so.
And one more little thing of, you know, to echo what Dave Pienso had to say, you know, it's time, it puts you as a council in a tough spot to try to be that person, that group to say this is what you're gonna have to do, but I get that, that's a tough spot to be in. So I'd rather see it be done amongst the parties and have them come to an agreement. And I'm confident that, you know, I have it right, guys, right? Let's do it.
I, I don't think it's even just the council, it's...
The neighborhood in general.
Neighborhood, the city itself. There's a lot of factors here that I think, I think that giving them a month to hash it out would be in our best interest. So with that, I'd make a motion to table it for, till October twenty-fourth.
Motion by Schulte to table till October twenty-fourth.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Gargano.
Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for the great forty-five minute conversation. All right, and number two from General Business Approved and I, Ted, number nine, Hotel Infrastructure Community Development Block Grant Project Bit Selection. Steve. How are you doing, Dave?
Good.
I hope yours is less contentious.
So this is the bid for the, the Skinner Drive going on the horse road to the east, about five hundred and fifty feet, so we'll, we'll put that street in, so that the hotel has the entrance on the backside. So we had pretty good turnout, we had five, five bids. H and James, H James and Sons was the low bidder. They're out of southwest Wisconsin, they're a pretty big contractor. So their low bid was two hundred and ninety, two thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And we, we had an estimate around three fifty, I think, for this one, so we got some pretty good prices.
Really good.
Like if you look at the bidders, they won. They're doing, they did Lebansky Road, SNL Underground, they're out of Lodi, they bid on our stuff before. And then Bill Lucky, that's the guy that was working on Laurel Street, so. So we did get some good prices and interest. So we recommend a little bit of H James and Sons.
Any questions for Steve?
And they'd like to start this fall.
Very good, even better yet.
We'd like them to start this fall.
Like them to start, it's a good morning. Don't ask for them.
Okay, let's be done.
At least bring a couple of couples. Any questions, or take a motion?
Just keep in mind that this is part of, part of that construction. This is a six hundred and sixty thousand dollar project in the hole that takes into consideration the Skinner Drive construction, then the reconstruction of golf course, and then the traffic lights. That portion of it will be done next year.
Yeah, we'll bid that out in this winter.
Good time to structure for the spring, yeah.
So this is just getting access toward the hotel?
Yeah, yeah.
Questions, or take a motion?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Motion by Kootson. Seconded by Bronchway. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, same Steve. Recommendations from Boards, Committees and Commissions, we have one item, it's from the Plant Commission. It's approved and I, first reading instead of public hearing for October tenth, twenty twenty-two, for ordinance nineteen forty-five dash twenty-two, amending chapter six ninety of the City Code related to zoning. Brian.
All right, nothing on contractors yards in this amendment, so. Um, so just a couple of, I didn't kinda make a list over the years, some things that, like, see changed, that's, this is, this is mods and ends here. Uh, the first one is the zoning board, um, it talks about a resolution, which, um, it's not in state statute, it hasn't been done in bulk in two years, so just striking that out. Conditional uses, kinda cleaning up those standards, a lot of, some of the standards we moved in the site plan review, because every conditional use has a site plan, so it's gonna be covered one way or the other. But some of the, like architectural plans, for example, even if it's a site plan, which is committed, is a permitted use, that's still, still something about the plan permission review, they still really look at the architectural plans of a building, so that'll be moved down to the site plan standards. Mobile home parks, subsection twenty-four, all the street that we have in town now were developed prior to this ordinance, and they got, not conform with this section. So we've had to do a couple of appearances over the years to address that, so this would just basically say, you know, if there's, if that forty-foot rule is a conflict, then they would just abide by the normal setbacks or the standards for that residential zone, that zone, which is R two, they're on R two zone. Then you see the site plan standards area, just kinda clean that up, they're moving things around from the conditional use standards. Parking requirements, section sixty-four. Currently, there's basically two standards, either ten by eighteen or nine by twenty. So we wanted to have one, Plan Commission, settle on ten by eighteen. And then temporary signs, that, since we can't, we can't regulate a sign based on, can't say based on what the sign is, you know, or what's advertised on the sign. So the second, subsection two referred to the old sign as span, the main street here, the old banner that was used there, which came on stage, I think it broke free once or twice. So now, uh, the public works allowing some signage down by the airport, you might have seen it. So that's, so that kinda got ahead of the ordinance here, so we meant that, we're looking to amend that ordinance to address that, that location. And the Plan Commission also had some discussion, they'd like to see if there's any other city-owned property that they would also consider that signage, so that was also added in here as well as that section. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Brian? We had a good discussion about this at Plant Commission, for sure. Appreciate the cleanup, it was real good. All right, thanks, Brian. Uh, discussion, I'll take a motion to set public hearing.
I'll move to set public hearing.
Motion by Schulte.
Second.
Seconded by Kenny. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, allow that public hearing on October tenth. City administrators report, number one, discussion, Town of Reesburg and Town of Winfield boundary agreements. Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you've probably noticed, we've done a series of annexations over the past few years. Necessary annexations, we are, you know, basically landlocked by the township, so the only way for the city to grow geographically is through annexation. That has caused a, a bit of a rift between us and specifically the Town of Reesburg and a little bit Town of Winfield, but not so much. So we were approached to actually take an assert with a paper that advised us that the Town of Reesburg and the Town of Winfield want to get out of the boundary agreement and either just be done with it or renegotiate it. I include copies of the boundary agreement, they're, they're out there to go. You know, we have it with the Town of Excelsior, the Town of Reesburg, the Town of Winfield. I hope you had a chance to take a look at them, reading through there, I don't know if you noticed how, I guess, pro town they really are. These would be agreements that I probably wouldn't recommend that you guys ever sign again, the way, the way that they're worded, because they are really, they really leverage heavily towards the townships. It identifies growth areas, and we've utilized those growth areas, and we've grown almost to the extent of those growth areas, but now we can't renegotiate growth area again, so we're, we're kind of at the end of the line there. What they would like to do is renegotiate, what I would ask that you guys do is, let's take a breath and not, and just wait. So under the current agreement, if we annex property in the growth area, we don't pay that five years of property taxes. If we annex property outside of the growth area, we pay the township portion of their property taxes for ten years. State law is if you annex into the township, you pay the portion of the township taxes for five years. So that's, that's the difference. So just to give you kind of an idea of, I guess, the penalty that that would be for us to annex, if Jeff Rostvar came in and wanted to bring in forty acres of his property to the north out of the Town of Winfield, the township tax on that is thirty dollars a year. So we would be out of the hook for a hundred and fifty dollars. It would cost us more per hour to have our city attorney draft that agreement than it would just to go ahead and accept that cost. So, again, just, it's out there, I would just like you guys to, to maybe just let this one sit for a little bit before we start to renegotiate. If they're not excited about the terms of the current agreement, I can't imagine getting an agreement that they would be happier with. I, because if, this one is really, I mean, if you talk to people who were involved in land use and building, i.e. the Town of Excelsior, they do not want to get rid of their boundary agreement at all, they wanna make sure that that stays intact the way it is. So I think the Town of Reesburg had a bigger issue with it. The Town of Winfield kinda followed suit, I didn't know sure what that was about. But just so you guys are aware, I did add a couple of emails that I sent to the town chair over the past year or so, talking about annexations, I've not received any response from either one of those emails. And I know that he's gotten them. I know that he claims that that we're violating the boundary agreement as it's written, but not the word of the agreement, the spirit of the agreement, which is really just his interpretation of the agreement. His biggest issue is that we've solicited people to annex.
And we have.
We've asked them if they'd be interested in annexing. I'm not sure they would know any other way if we didn't bring it up to them. Lebansky Road was unusual because that was a lot of property, that was a lot of people. But that was their biggest concern was that. Now, in our defense, speaking about violations of the boundary agreement, the entire town board of Reesburg showed up at Lebansky Road. They're prohibited from, from picking a side in an annexation, but they all showed up there and they all expressed their dissent. But I know because I made them sign in, because I wanted the evidence, just in case something happened later. This is the latest annexation that we did with Department of Transportation, which you know meant almost nothing to anyone, it was tax-free land. Their chair wrote a letter to the DOT expressing his objection to the, the annexation, a letter that now I have. So, I mean, we wanna get along, we've always acted as an older brother to both of the towns, all three of the towns. We've always done everything we could to help, but I think in this particular case, maybe we should just stop, not renegotiate, and just kinda see how things go from here on.
I think I know what you're talking about, it means your reactions probably not the best in the situation, for sure. Seems like a, like a personal vendetta, that's what I felt from the get-go with them. Which is unfortunate. Someone's gonna end up being hurt by it is citizenship.
Tim, a couple of questions, first, that's all, what you just explained the five times, is that true on direct annexation?
It's with any, yeah, with any annexation.
Any annexation?
Yes, yeah. And that's enough to keep the town whole, because they understand the finances between the two are different.
Correctly, yes, okay. And the other question I had is, is, these agreements are somewhat obscure, are they not? Other communities do not have a lot of this, or have this.
So we have three, and I counted, and they're, they're kind of immortalized on, on DOE's website. There's about seventy, and if you think there's seventy some, there's seventy-two counties, there's seven hundred and some towns. So, yeah, there's not a lot going around. I mean, it's, it's unfortunate, and this is, these are antiquated, for sure. But it's unfortunate because they do have the potential of helping to alleviate duplicational services and things like that. There's that potential in there. It would help us to grow, I guess, more responsibly if if like we had some sort of sale or how you build your roads, you know, and properties that are continuing to spazz. And just as a side note, the ET is still there, the extraterritorial is still there, that's still unfortunate. But, yeah, there's, there's some benefits to it, but, yeah, they are a little bit antiquated.
And I would agree with you, it's, it seemed to be on the side of the town for the privilege, instead of the privilege of the city growing into the towns, which is the way it really is supposed to be.
Yeah, well, that's, that's how they're set up, is statutory land and waiting, basically. They have limited governance by statute, that's because we're just kind of maintaining themselves until they're incorporated.
Especially in the ET.
Correct.
Every city that's growing annexes property, and so I don't, I don't know why there's like such a surprise to them that we're growing city and we're annexing in territory.
Yeah, we never, we never annexed outside of the growth area.
So.
And just to clarify, the five years of taxes, is that from the time, calculated from the time of annexation and not the improved? Or is that?
From the time of, so it freezes at the time of annexation.
Yeah, so you don't pay taxes on the...
Correct.
So we, so we potentially more than make that back in the very first year, yes.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah, something.
Steve.
Just, I was there when those things were originated, and the only reason they even wanted them was for the sewer and the water. It had nothing to do with the five-year, they didn't care about that at all at that time, it was just the sewer and the water, because they can hook on the sewer and water, it's in front of their house, but now if they wanna be out, they can't. So that's just a...
Yeah, there was a provision in there that allowed them, if it passed their property, they could hook on to it, not annex in within, for ten years.
And we have, I think there's three properties that took advantage of that, and there's, we still haven't annexed them.
We have others, though, that have actually done that, do we not, in...
There's...
Yeah, we've backed, backed three contracts, right, with different homeowners that have connected and have chosen to wait the tenures.
There's three of them out there that are hooked on the sewer and water, and we have, when they did that, then we have them, our attorneys do an agreement, and it's recorded. So they have, we, let's say a developer wants to develop around them in their, an island, they have to come in. So that was, you know, where it started was on our Dewey. Those three properties up on, just north of the hospital, up on, that's why this started. It was way back in two thousand and four, I, who started it. It was because of the sewer.
They haven't exercised those, those demands after a decade?
No, that was when we started the agreement, but some of, there was one just on, when we did the school, when the school was just built, the, the new elementary school. There's one on, on, um, out of the cemetery.
K North.
Yeah, there's one up there. And I can't remember where the third one is, Tim.
Yeah, I have it in my, in my office.
I know where the two are, but there's one more.
There's only one that's, that's at the tenure spot right now, and that's the one on...
Yeah, that's one on K.
But we can't get water to them.
Yeah, we can't get all the services to them. They're on sewer, but they're not on water. So, but if we ever, if that land around it is developed, then he would have to come in, he can't, he can't say no, so.
And if I'm not mistaken, if that property was to be annexed, then it would create a, it would create an island and, and force us to do other annexations.
No, that one could be connected, but it's, they're getting the water, the water. There's no way to get water without going off of...
And I think we can actually...
But the one by the school out there, that...
Well, because Kitson's in.
That one's different.
Yeah, Kitson's in, she's in the city.
Yeah, it's just that, that one house right next to Kitson. But they have probably six, seven years left.
Yeah.
So that was the main thrust of that, of those agreements when we did it back.
So the reason we can't get water, because the other properties are in the way?
It's geography.
That one property came in, were hooked onto the sewer when we ran that sewer up, up Highway K, that they'd intercepted sewer years back, I remember that, they, they hooked, we offered those people if they wanted to hook on. But they had to agree to this, the tenure, and only one took advantage of it. But there's no water, there's no water being...
You're just asking why you couldn't get water to, I think it's geography, right?
Yeah, well, it's, you'd have to go through someone's private car.
Okay.
There's no, there's no easy way to get to it, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Thank you for the discussion.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Commission Committee Board and Staff Reports, Start Preservation.
We met tonight, and our big topic was, we're gonna work with Headstones and Looms to identify some historical tombstones up in the cemetery and work with them to get them cleaned and preserved and, in some cases, restored. So it's a new, exciting business that's been worked... So, uh, it's a new, exciting business, uh, that's been working with CDA, uh, so we're excited to partner with Jody.
Very good. My couple of library board.
Library board met on Thursday last, um, we reviewed compensation for a couple of different positions there, and we also finalized our budget proposal, but, uh, so on is going to bring to Tim, um. We had a great summer, numbers are up, just continue to get up, grew every month, so. All is well.
All is well with the library. Any other committee, commission, or staff members, anything you want to report? All right, off to the mayor, um, just wanted to make sure, uh, the council remembers on the twentieth of September is the Chamber of Commerce annual meeting slash dinner. Um, we'd nice if I could get a full membership there as close as possible, if I know things come up, but, um, good representation would be good, make sure you bring your certificate and others as well.
Let me know, because I have to pick your meal.
Yeah.
Unless you just want what I think you should have. I mean, you would eat it, yeah.
And I actually just got an email from Christine, that Tim and Phil sent me that, but.
I did.
You did? Let me if you're.
I think Tim would be a great speaker.
Um, basically, just to say, um, Reesburg Chamber of Commerce will be holding any meeting on September twenty-ninth. Um, so should receive the information, okay, the reason I'm writing the three is because each year, uh, they invite someone from our membership to speak for a few moments about something that I think may be of interest and important to our assembled members, we have been fortunate to always have wonderful guest speakers. In my opinion, this year, there was only one clear choice, that means those requirements, that's the city of Reesburg. I've attached just a few notes, um, just, you know, I talked to Christine before she left here, and, um, she wants to make sure the city is highlighted for how, while things are going and, um, how we're growing, so it's a pretty good honor as well, so you can go, let's, let's definitely go, a good showing there.
What was the date again?
Uh, the twenty-ninth. Last Thursday, I love. And also it's homecoming this week, so, um, biggest thing I'd highlight for that is, make sure you get to the football game if you can on Friday night, and if you got, uh, if you're watching this later on, make sure your kids stay home, right, Chief?
Watch out for kids in dark clothing.
Yes, watch out for kids in their clothing, and if you see something suspicious, go ahead and report it, that's why we have law enforcement. All right, we'll go to closed session, uh, consideration of moving into closed session pursuant to, actually, let's go around the horseshoe, Tom, anything yet?
Yes, also Wednesday is the steak feed, it benefits the, the sports for Reesburg, so.
Yes, all athletes and other extraterritorials as well. Yeah, Kuntzen?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Phil, can you hear some?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Missy, friends?
Nothing, thank you.
Adam, Kenny?
Nothing tonight.
City attorney, Max?
Nothing, just thanks for having me today.
Thank you for coming. This is a great first, uh, city of Reesburg council meeting for you. Memorable. Uh, Jay from City Hall? Tim, back there? Mike, you're down?
I was channeling our former colleague Jim Warrior today, thinking about how much he was gloating.
Oh.
To the football game, for those who don't remember Jim, he was probably the freaking fan in the room. He would give us no M.
Oh, he would not. And even living in Texas, he has season tickets to the.
That's right, I don't know, it's always allowing him to fly out, but, uh, I was, I was thinking about Jim today, so.
Jason Schulte?
Uh, might be breaking acceptable standards, but I want to thank everyone who came out for the grand opening of my new venture and the chamber for their support, it was uh, forty-some, fifty people in the building, which was pretty incredible.
Very good. Much success on your endeavors.
Thanks.
Craig Rashley?
Nothing tonight.
Darren Fry?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Yeah, nothing?
Nothing.
All right, now we'll read this to go to closed session. Consideration of moving into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section nine point eight-five, sub-one, sub-B, for the purposes of considering the dismissal of the motion licensing or discipline of a city of Reesburg employee. Take a motion to go to closed session. Motion by Phil, seconded by Darren, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we'll take a couple minutes, thanks everyone.
Does that make any difference on, you know, talk about this thing?